And then I will come back and summarize.
Good evening, I'm Clark Pierce, this is my associate Wesley Curtis. It's a pleasure for us to be here tonight and describe to you the process that we've been through in planning your new high school. Basically, this is the outline of our presentation. We'll talk a little bit, just real briefly about the community involvement. We'll talk about the Davie High School, the plans, the elevations, and the site plan, and the project construction schedule, and then what we think it will cost. I'm not sure you can read this, but this is just the process that we went through. It's a programming process, you may hear it referred to as a brainstorming session, a charrette, and any number of terms that can be used for that process. But basically, we gathered together all the stakeholders that would be involved and have some interest in the project, and get them together to talk about what the leads are, and what their dreams are, and what their visions are, for any project, be it a high school, or any other type of project. In this case, we put together a group of individuals, basically the superintendent, his staff, Jeff Wallace, Mike Spielman, and let's see, was one of... Ginda, the principals and Hanes. And this was sort of the executive committee, if you will, we called it Group A on the chart there, and then there's the Group B, which consisted of the wider user group, the teachers, the students, the staff members for the high school. We began this process back in December, we actually kicked it off in November, just to get together, talk about how the process would go. And then we got together for two days of intensive discussions with staff and students. We had a variety of different student groups come through, we had parent groups, we had student leadership groups, we had athletics, basically any aspect that you encounter in a high school environment, we had involved in this process. This is sort of what that looked like, just to sit down, basically an interview-type process, where we had plans from previous Davie High School, and we talked about needs and wishes, and what do you have that you like, what do you not have that you'd like to have, or that you need, with every individual we met. Here's the student group, a couple of board members, and the superintendent, and the principal. What we did, we had pinned up ideas that were expressed, particularly unique ideas, there's a lot of mundane things that go on in the planning of any project, but ideas that were unique, and we felt like needed to be pinned up, and those were up on the board, that was sort of a cartoon approach, everyone got a kick out of that, but it was sort of memorable, because you can remember a cartoon. We also did a similar process for the repurposing of the existing site. We gathered together on a morning for about two and a half hours over at the high school in multi-purpose room, with a number of key individuals across the community. About 25, I believe, showed up for that meeting, good cross-section of the community, and if you could read that, you could tell who they are, but in terms of position. But just to talk about, dream about what could happen with the existing high school site, when the new high school is developed. This is some of that interaction. Again, nothing was off limits, it's, you know, whatever idea came to mind about what might happen on that site, it took the direction of largely athletic in nature. I'm gonna get Wesley to talk about the high school itself, I think probably most of you that are here tonight, I'm sure have at least seen some photos, or a couple of boards in the back there behind the panel, and Wesley?
Thank you, thank you Clark. What I'd like to do is just spend a little time talking about the full plan itself. After gathering all the information from all the stakeholders, what we try to do is sort of decipher that information in a format that allows us to then say, based on all that we've heard, what the needs are from the community, the needs are from the school, the needs are from the staff, we then put together a program that we then developed specifically for Davie County. What we tried to do was to, or what we did actually, was lay that out in a plan. And that plan, as you know, includes the building on a site that we had looked out on from Tarrin Road. Briefly, just to kind of give you an idea, this is sort of the layout of the site, this is the new building, there's approximately 1,200 parking spaces that are sort of laid out throughout the site. This is the location here for the proposed stadium, there are tennis courts along there, there are currently eight tennis courts. This is the, would be the practice field, this would be the new softball field, and this would be the new baseball field. The baseball field is currently in the area that is sort of associated with the existing parks and rec, over in that particular area. One of the things that we found that is very advantageous to the site is just the ability to use parking both on the middle school site, as well as the high school site, to help facilitate parking for the new stadium. This is sort of a blow-up of that area, this sort of gives you a little more detail to the stadium here, you can see the entry potential, and again, keep in mind, this is schematic design, so what we try to do is develop concepts and ideas, and these certainly will be further refined as we move into design development, if we get to that point. And in that, you can kind of see, again, the parking here that would be for students, students would park here, and then enter into the building through the student entry. One of the things we tried to keep paramount in the overall design process was safety. So, we designed the building so that at a certain point in the morning, all the doors could be locked down, and the main, it moves all persons that are entering the building would have to enter through the front entrance there. And then from there, they can then control egress and entrance access into the building. This is the main building here, you'll see in the full plan, this is the main building here, this leads to a three-story tower that is directly behind that, and what you see here is the CTE building, which will house your carpentry, auto tech, and ag-type facilities. Bus parking would be along here, and again, this is Formantown Road. This is the full plan, in summary, you can kind of see the main gymnasium here, which would seat approximately 2,000 seats, the auxiliary gym, which would seat approximately 400 persons, you can see the support for that space, which are the locker rooms, which has ample showers for both the men and women. Another feature we've added in here is the wrestling room, which is on this backside here, this side is the auditorium, so you'd have an auditorium and a facility, and then along here are your performing arts spaces, this is arts, you've got band and dance along this area there, and then your administration is directly through the front. Along the backside here, in the tower, are all of your basic classroom teaching spaces, so that your typical classrooms, as well as your CTE classrooms, which are on the floor here, as well as in this space here, which as I mentioned earlier, accommodates carpentry, carpentry and ag, as well as your auto tech. This is the second level of that, on the second level, we would house the media center, which is sort of in the middle of all the three floors, and in the middle of the two wings. And then on the third level, again, additional classes and classroom spaces, out on this particular area here is where we'd have a potential area for a green roof garden, which again, is another teaching tool for students. These are the elevations of the building, again, in schematic design, we're just starting to look at, I guess, what it looks like, we would, at some point, as we moved into the design development, we'd really refine the color, and the size, and the texture, and different parts of the brick. One of the main features we wanted to emphasize was, as we looked at this design, was something that was unique to Davie, which was the orange wall that you see here, this is the elevation that you would see from Formantown Road, as you look toward the building, which would then identify the main entry into the building, and also gives that identity to the overall facility. Here's an overview, bird's eye view of that, again, if you're looking from the east toward the building, you can see the feature wall, here's what we call it, and that's the main entry into the building. And this is that main entry, so this kind of gives you just, again, an anticipated view of what that main entrance would look like. And this would be the interior of the building, after you come into the main entry, you enter into what is the dining areas, and the dining would seat approximately 660 persons, so you can imagine in three periods, how many people that can really accommodate. Well, it was one of the main things that kept coming up in all our interviews, is we must have enough dining space. These are some images of some other prototypes that we've done, that would reflect kind of what you might see in the new Davie Media Center, and this would be a typical of the auditorium space. Try to just summarize those quite quickly, just so you got a flair for what the building is. Now, turn it back over to Clark, who'll talk a little bit about the repurposing of the
Okay, you remember the process that we talked about earlier, about the community, this, of course, is the existing high school site. Buildings that we're talking about keeping in this process would be basically the gym buildings, the B building, the A building, and the cafeteria building. And some of the phases you may see on some proposed designs for the site, the B building and the A building may actually go away, but that would depend on how that develops by the hands of the county. The orange building, up in the upper left-hand corner, is what's known as the K building, and it's the performing arts building of the media center, and we're proposing that that would be retained for the administrative building. This is the proposed layout of how that might reconfigure internally, the large green area there to the right bottom would be a new boardroom, it's about 3,500 square feet, and a variety of offices arrayed around it, the superintendent's main suite would be in the upper right-hand corners you come in, which is where the guidance is currently located. This is one option that would encompass a variety of athletic activities, including football, soccer, field hockey, lacrosse, baseball, little league, there's a little space in the lower corner of the, quite the flex, of the little league fields there that could serve as sort of a town green, if you will, for concerts, and basically just free play, there's also room for a pool, if that's your desire, tennis courts, volleyball courts, and there's some bandicages on the backside of the auxiliary gym. And just another concept that shows additional little league fields out in the end of the football field, and just another, so a variety of things that could happen, depending on what the county determines it finally is. The construction schedule, we see it currently is pending a bond referendum in November of this year, and successful package, passage, we would see that design development would start immediately to refine the schematic design plans, that would take two to three months, and then the final construction documents, or bid documents, would be completed around mid-May, and then a bid period of approximately one month, and then there's time for review and award, and then construction typically takes about two years, so we would see that being completed sometime in time for, I think, 17, 16, 16, so two years and 13 months. Cost estimate, square footage totals 328,800 square feet, and we're projecting in round figures about $48 million, that includes all the site work, the ball fields that you've seen. Probably didn't have a chance to look closely at the site layout, but there is space reserved at the north end of the field for a fieldhouse, we would propose, we'll do that as an offer when we're designing the rest of the project, depending on bids, if we have good bids and there's money available, then we would recommend acceptance of that fieldhouse as well. To repurpose the existing site, demote the buildings, renovate the existing K building for administrative uses, all of that would total about $2.6 million.
Thank you Wesley and Clark. I'll take just a couple minutes to summarize and talk about what our next steps can be. So you saw the new Davie County High School, when you look at the soft costs that included, all the other things that go along construction, everything down to moving our existing high school to the new location, we're talking about a projected cost of $53.7 million. For repurposing the existing campus, you saw that they broke that out, the buildings that have the gray hash marks would be removed from the campus to make way for whatever the county decided was the best purpose for that campus. We recognize, and I share with the Board of Education, that is not our decision, we have carved out a space that we feel like would be good for the school system to use for our purposes, in repurposing the building that was built in 1992. The rest of the campus, the Board of Education would deed back over to the county for your purposes, and through the process that we facilitated, I think there were a lot of great ideas gathered, that your recreational master planning committee can use and move the county forward. As I, as I look across Davie County, I think this is a really important project, and as your school superintendent, I know how important it is for our students to have activities after school, and during the summer, and we see how successful even the soccer field and the soccer park up in that part of the county has done, I'd love to see something developed here that would be a destination for Moxville, and bring people to Moxville. So this is a great plan, we feel, of repurposing an existing building, removal of some of the oldest buildings that really makes way for us to deed that property over to you, which then becomes an immediate match for any grants that you might want to apply for. So, we're excited to hear back from your master planning committee as to what they have chosen, are the priorities for Davie County. So any way that we can work with your master planning committee, or with you, we will welcome that partnership. So in summary, let's look at our existing revenue sources, and some things the Board of Education has committed to, we already had some money set aside for heating and air conditioning renovations in the K building, that coupled with some lottery money, the Board of Education is prepared to, $2 million toward this project upfront. We have had discussions in the past about renovations at Davie High, and during those discussions, commissioners had a commitment of $5 million toward that project. We would hope the Board of Commissioners would uphold your commitment of solving this issue at Davie High, with at least $5 million to address the high school issue. If that were the case, and you decided to do that, we would have $7 million upfront to go toward the cost of the new high school and repurposing. So if we summarize that, the new high school at $53.7 million, repurposing at $2.6, for a total of $56.4, if we back out $7 million, if you all were to uphold your commitment of at least $5 million, we're talking about a potential school bond of just over $49 million. Some other potential revenue, we have had discussions, and the Board of Education has committed that, starting in 2016, the Board of Education would commit $200,000 annually from North Carolina lottery funds toward debt service on the new high school, which would reduce the burden on our taxpayers as far as the debt service on our new school. After the new school is built, we need six to eight months to do the renovations in the K building, and to move our offices from Cherry Street, and some of our offices at Central Davie Education Center, that would allow us to expand our alternative program, and continue to house students on that campus. We would move our operations and all administrative services to the K building, and we would propose deeding that property back to the county, that property could be sold, and proceeds could go toward this project. The current tax value of the Cherry Street property is just under $600,000. Another thing that has been talked about quite a bit, and it is completely your decision, is roll-off debt for previous projects. This county is fortunate in that we do not have a large debt service compared to some other of our neighbors, and by June of 2016, almost $700,000 in annual debt service will roll off our books. If you chose, that can also be put toward debt service for schools. So between the lottery funds the Board of Education is planning to commit, and potential roll-off debt, is almost $900,000 that could go toward debt service, and again, reduce the tax burden on the taxpayers in Davie County. Gentlemen, we are at a crossroads in our history. One new high school for all students in Davie County, we feel like is the need, and it's the Board of Education's responsibility to find solutions. We have not brought you more problems tonight, we've brought you a solution, and those solutions have been developed through our architectural firm, with a lot of input from people all across this community. So we feel good about the solution that we're presenting, we feel good that it touches every part of Davie County, and I stand before you tonight as your superintendent, and I represent 6,500 children who don't have an opportunity to vote, but it is our responsibility to take care of those children and invest in their future. I want to sincerely thank Walter Robbs Callahan Pierce for what they have done, listening to the needs of our staff, and our students, our community, and presenting us with a solution that will take us a long way in Davie County. So here's our request. You all have advocated and stated publicly that anything more than $10 million you'd want to take to the vote of the people, and we respect that. A clear vote of the people, uncomplicated by any other issues, we feel like it's time for people in Davie County to be able to decide whether or not they want a new high school. The solution we presented you tonight has never been voted upon in Davie County before. There have been failed bonds, but those bonds were for a second school, or for an auxiliary campus. This is a solution that meets the needs of all of our students, it's a comprehensive high school that meets the needs for years and years to come. And we would ask that you would consider, and continue to advocate with transparency and truth in government, and you would give people in Davie County an opportunity to decide for themselves whether or not they want a new high school. We have spent a lot of time, as Wesley and Clark talked about, just during the process they facilitated, we spent a lot of time listening to people all across Davie County. We listened to all different types of ideas, from our students, from our staff, from parents that are in this room, from business leaders in this community. We went through an extensive strategic planning process. As I shared with the panel at the State of Davie last week, or week before last, I guess it is now, academically, Davie County schools is a school system that you all can be extremely proud of. We rank really high in the state. When you look at our students' performance at the end of the fifth grade, in reading, we're ranked eighth, in math, we're ranked 14th. By the end of middle school, in reading, we're ranked third, in math, we're ranked third, and in high school, in Algebra I, we're ranked fourth, in English I, we're ranked fifth. Our teachers are getting the job done, it's time now that we invest in the future of our community, and provide our teachers and students a facility and a working and learning environment, where we can continue to foster quality academic progress. Request to the Board of Education is number one, we request that you stand firm on your commitment of at least $5 million towards solving the high school issue. We understand, and you've made it clear, this money must be borrowed, it must be paid back, this is not money that's in your budget or in reserves, this would be money that would be borrowed. We worked together with our county leadership, and we applied for qualified school construction bonds, so we have $3.1 million of that five already set aside for this purpose. With that, with what the Board of Education is willing to put down, we are looking at a bond referendum that would not exceed $49.4 million. The second, and most important, is we have grappled with this issue for years and years, we have worked diligently for months and months, gathering input and presenting to you a solution that we feel like is a viable solution. We don't want to keep grappling with the issue, we want to allow people an opportunity to decide whether or not they want a new high school in Davie County. So we request that you place a school bond referendum on the November 2013 ballot, and let the people of Davie County vote. If that happens, and you saw the timeline that our architects have put together, building a high school was no small feat, and I sure don't want to move a high school in the middle of a school year. So if we could meet the timeline, if the people of Davie County vote in November that they want a new high school, we can open that school in the fall of 2016. If you decide to delay the opportunity for people to vote, and you all have agreed that you want people to vote on this issue, if you decide to delay that decision beyond November 2013, that moves our progress another school year out, we would be opening fall of 2017. So that is our request, that you please put a bond referendum on the November ballot. In 1956, and I won't spend much time on this, because I did a whole presentation to our board last September on the history of what brought us to what we have now, but in 1956, this community had a vision, and that vision became reality. And in 1956, we opened a new high school, we closed four community high schools, I cannot imagine sitting on your board, or the school board, or being the superintendent at that point in time, and dealing with that issue, that must have been something that the community really struggled with. But they came together and they solved the problem, and they opened a school that has served this community really well, for a long time. At the same time, this community saw the need for a new hospital, and in 1956, we opened a new hospital. A hospital that has served this community extremely well, and we're fortunate to have both of those facilities for the last almost 60 years. From 1956 to 2013, a lot has changed. You see some photos here from the 1956 yearbook of Davie County High School, and the way we taught, the courses that we taught, the way we instruct, was a little different than what we do today. Our students must be prepared to work in a quality work environment, in 21st century skills, 21st century work environments. We have a plan, we have a vision, that people in this community have bought into, and we're presenting that to you tonight. We see some wonderful photos and renderings, I can't wait till we can sit down with the architects, and get into the, to dive into the details, and determine specifically how this thing turns out, but we need to do that after we obtain financing, and that takes a go to the people, and we want that to happen in November. So we have a solution, we've moved a long way, we've done really well, that school was built for 725 students, now we're almost at 1,800. So it's time that we do something about that, and again, we haven't brought you more problems, but a solution. I want to introduce a friend to Davie County, a friend to public education, a friend who has made a tremendous investment in our community. In 1956, his hospital opened here, and this past year, we saw construction going up in eastern Davie County for a new hospital. Dr. John McConnell is the chief executive officer of Wake Forest Baptist Medical Center, and John asked if he could come tonight and share with you why this solution is important to Davie County, and it's important to preparing our future workforce and the employees that he supports at Wake Forest Baptist.
Thank you Superintendent, I'm humbled to be able to address the Commissioner's decision, I appreciate, I'll just take two or three minutes of your time. Yeah, I am a guest- By the end of this decade, we will make over $100 million investment in Davie County. Part of that is clearly addressing the health needs of your community, but I would say an equally important part of this, we were making a series of very difficult decisions over the last few years and looking at other competing needs, is actually betting and trusting in the future of Davie County itself. Because for our project to be successful long-term, Davie County must continue to experience economic development and must continue to be perceived, as you heard from the superintendent, as one of the best public school systems in the country. We want to recruit new physicians, nurses, medical technologists, to not just work in that facility at intersection of Data 1 and I-40, but to live, work, and play in Davie County. The best opportunity we have to secure that future is to develop vibrancy, even more vibrancy within the county. And candidly, the high school does not currently contribute to that vision from a facility standpoint. It doesn't contain modern laboratories. It doesn't contain the type of facilities that will even permit the next generation of educational technologies, all of which our future employees are going to have to be trained in and are going to have to understand. And if we shared a vision, I really think we probably do share a vision, the best investment that we can make today, in addition to that hospital at intersection of Data 1 and Business 40, is to invest in a new high school for Davie County. We would really love the vast majority of employees who are going to be working in your hospital to actually live in this county. In order to encourage, you know, newly recruited physicians, as earlier, and nurses to live in this community, I can't stress enough how important it is that they have a robust public education system. The talent of the teachers is there, but to sustain that over time, we really must have facilities in this county that are competitive and will continue to be attractive, not just the students frankly, but actually the teachers who also have choices about where they work. I'd like to close by distressing the importance of momentum, and I really would hope that you all would consider, seriously consider the schedule outlined by the superintendent. Momentum is very important in the future of the county. This hospital is going to come on by this fall. You've had some tremendous good news in economic development in this county, and just think how wonderful it would be to announce a positive public referendum, building a new school on election in the county. In my opinion, there's no better thing that this county could do than to actually hit it out of the park with all three of those things. A new hospital, economic development, and a new high school next. You all would be even bigger winners than you are today if you chart that course. Thank you very much. (applause)
Mr. Chairman, that concludes your presentation. I'll be glad to entertain any questions from the Commissioners. We sure appreciate the presentation of Dr. Hartness and Walter Robbs Callahan Peers and Dr. McConnell. Appreciate you coming over. So at this time, I'm sure we'll have more meetings and questions after we study this a little bit more and, you know, get this thing, see if we can't get it more toward bond. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, this time we're at item number six, request of use public school building capital ADM funds. Ms. Burris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request submitted by the Board of Education, and it is a request to approve the use of public school building capital ADM funds, and this is in the amount of $51,686 to purchase software and equipment to enhance school security systems.
Do I hear a motion to approve? Send me a second. All in favor, raise your hand. I would ask for a turn over to Mr. Vogel, that, you know, this is a public comment session here, and I know this is a heated subject, probably going to be a lot of speakers tonight, but I'd ask everybody to treat each other with some good old Davie County respect and, you know, respect each other's opinion. We may not always agree, but we can let everybody speak their piece and be civil about it. So at this time, I'll turn over to Mr. Vogel.
The Chairman members of the board, we have here the, either 26 or 27 people who signed up. I've got two people on the same line. I do not know if they're going to speak together or separately, but I would say this, it's my understanding from the amendment that was made, we're not limited to 20 minutes, but we're still limited to three minutes per person. Is that correct? And then for the members of the public, when you come up, you need to identify yourself. You need to, at that point in time, identify the topic of concern that you've signed up to speak on, and there will be no dialogue between the board and the speaker. This is a time for you to make a public comment with regards to any topic that you've signed up for. Beyond that, we're ready to get started. And I have first Ron Keister. Is that correct?
Close enough.
Close enough. Okay, thank you. And this topic is the high school, and I will be having.
My name is Ron Keister. I live in Moncksville over near Ridge Park, retired here in 2007. What I want to talk about is kind of neutral. Let me see, something, my background real quick. My degrees are in accounting. I worked on my doctorate in higher education finance, program planning, but it could be dissertation, but family and medical prevented me from doing this. I spent about 40 years doing auditing work, an excellent CPA firm, internal audit manager at AT&amp;T, director of internal auditing at two major universities. But what I'm going to talk about is facts, what I found, what I think. First thing is, the GS 115-521 makes a statement about the responsibilities of the board. The board shall be given reasonable time to provide the funds upon which, after investigation, shall be necessary to provide their respective units, which is what Dr. Hartness is in charge of, with the building suitable equipment for the students. Now they're supposed to do an investigation. The feasibility analysis is required by the state to justify a school. The feasibility analysis was originally provided by Dr. Hartness, but DPI told me that they thought that the LITTLE study was much better for them to be able to do a feasibility analysis. So that they did their own feasibility analysis using the extensive LITTLE report. If you looked at that, that is what, 590 pages long, a lot of facts. One of the things they didn't do, and I as an auditor would look at it, they didn't come up here and do any confirmation, some verification of this, to make sure that the data they were using was valid and accurate. That gives me some concern. An investigation, I believe the Commission should take a look at, doing some verification, just to make sure that there's nothing, no mistakes anywhere. Architecture costs. I tried to look up a lot of the architectural information, and the information I got kind of, it does conflict with the information that was presented by the architect. Now, I researched and got a lot of data from a lot of sources, from North Carolina sources, and I think that the cost may be more than that, appear to me to be more than that. And I would caution the Commissioner to take a look at this and make sure that we've got really good data so we know what it's going to cost us, so the public knows what it's going to cost us, because we don't want to get a bond that will not cover the cost. For instance, it's been mentioned to me.
Thank you. Your time is up, sir.
Bonds do not cover.
Thank you. Your time is up, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Next we have Bill Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, folks passed the second row like very hard they were. This is too important for any of us to mention. We just not hearing about it. They're not even kind of going, just a bunch of munkers.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. That's better.
You gotta eat that. People got a plate, figure. How about that? Is that better? That means I can't use my hands. Mr. Chairman, my name is Bill Johnson. I'd like to thank you and the board members for this opportunity to speak to you. I consider it a privilege to be here. I've never spoke in front of the Board of Commissioners before. I thank you for making this forum possible to be able to do that. I'm not here to speak or to try to make a case for or against a high school, although personally I've come to the conclusion that we do need a new high school and we can afford it. I'm here for another reason. I'm here to ask that you exercise the power of this board to now move this debate from the boardroom to the voting booth. Given the facts, so the pros and cons can be understood, I'm very confident that the citizens of Davie County are ready to vote up or down on building one new high school for all Davie County students. We all acknowledge that there is a lot of passion and good people on both sides of this issue. Please consider the benefits to us all, to everyone, of having a resolution determined by calling for a voter referendum at the earliest possible date. We know this board is somewhat divided on that issue. We understand that. You hold, have different opinions, just like the public does, but we believe that each of you also recognize that we, the people of Davie County, should ultimately make that decision. We ask that you not delay by getting this matter into the hands of the voters in the November municipal elections, and I thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Chairman, next we have Don. Is it Ruth?
Ruth.
Ruth. You're already there.
I'm Don Ruth. I live on a fixed income. I'm retired, but just as in 1956, people in this county were willing to make the sacrifice for a new hospital and a new high school, I personally am willing to take whatever it takes me to pay for it. Also, I would like to encourage you, because so many of you have said, "Let the people decide. Let the people decide." Well, with your authority, you can let the people decide in November, and I would encourage you to have our referendum in November so that we can move on with the decision that the people of Davie County. I myself will be voting for one high school for all, and I will be willing to pay for it out of my pocket as a property owner here in this county. Thank you.
Jack Coontz is next.
Mr. Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, and fellow citizens of Davie County. My name is Jack Coontz. I was born and raised in the Davie Academy communities of Davie County about over 70 years ago. I'm here to tell you tonight, I never had the opportunity to spend one single day in a Davie County school, not the first one. Nobody on the west side of Hutton Creek went to school in Davie County with the exception of two families. That was up until the early 1960s. That's water over the dam. What I'm telling you here tonight is, there's people in my community that have told me that they voted against a new high school, and the reason they voted against it, they wanted to see one school. They will support one new high school for the entire county, not two. So I'm here tonight to tell you that that's what the people that I talked to want to see, is one new high school. Now I'm here to tell you tonight that I support one new high school.
Judy Everett.
It's Jody.
Jody.
Okay.
Looks like a J U.
Not the first time that's happened. Probably will be the last. I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. It's really encouraging to see everybody out here. I've been involved with this thing over the last, I don't know, 10, 15 years, what's it been? It seems like everybody that gets up here to speak in the negative wants to talk about their credentials. I was born at Davie Hospital in 1971, attended Moncksville Elementary, Moncksville Middle, which should have been condemned when I was there, by the way. Hope you've seen that place. And then Davie High School when I was in '89. And the time is now, when I pulled into town tonight, there's all sorts of things going on, but having a youth crew here to cover what should have been done many, many years ago is unacceptable. This board has the opportunity to finally take care of the problems that have plagued our community forever. Now's the time. We don't need further meetings. If, Mr. Wise Carver, if your intention is to act on the funding yourselves, then I agree, let's have some further meetings. But if you're going to defer that responsibility to the voters, let's vote and let's vote now. Thank you.
Kathy Wall.
There's a little crowd. My name is Kathy Wall, and I live in Deacon's Ridge in Moncksville. I have worked as a real estate broker and company owner for 31 years in Moncksville. My husband Bobby and I are both lifelong residents of Davie County, and we both graduated from Davie High in 1976. Both of our daughters and sons and aunts also graduated from Davie, and my oldest grandson, which I cannot believe, will be a freshman at Davie this fall. I have watched closely over the last 10-plus years at the arguments back and forth over our high school dilemma. I have scratched my head over and over again about what the right thing to do would be. It has not been until now that I have felt positive that we have the right answer. The current plan is presented by our school board to construct one new Davie High School and the repurposing of the existing site appears to me to be the best plan to assure our citizens that all of our children share in the benefit of this new school. I also believe that every taxpayer will receive enormous benefits from the school that will far outweigh the cost of this construction, for after all, it has been proven over and over again that new schools attract families. Families then buy homes. Home sales begin to drive other home values up, which turn, in turn, brings back equity to our homeowners, which improves their overall financial situation. I could go on and on, not to mention the endless possibilities for the repurposing of the existing school site, which in my opinion would have an enormous positive economic impact on the Moncksville area. Our county is in a wonderful position for growth right now. We have been blessed with new industry coming into our county, recently bringing jobs and security that our citizens have been waiting for. We are watching a new hospital go up before our eyes that brings the promise of more jobs and additional positive growth in the future. We are poised to become one of the most attractive places to live in the triad area. Do not waste this opportunity. I say that to you men tonight. I ask you to be true leaders and put this on the ballot this November so that our citizens can vote. I believe the momentum is strong, and I believe that they will show you this when they vote, and I believe the vote will pass. Thank you.
David Coontz.
Good evening. It's the first time I've ever done this. My name is David Coontz, and I am a lifelong resident of Davie County. I am a teacher currently at the high school. I've been teaching now, this is my 12th year. And I previously taught in Preside County for five years. And then the last six years, I've been in Iredale County. I come to you tonight because, very passionate about this issue, because coming to Davie County High School, I got to see firsthand what Davie County pride's all about. All the high schools that I've taught in, Glen High School, Lake Norman, West Iredale High School, don't hold a candle to the pride that's in this county. I feel like that's a big reason why the first two bonds didn't get passed, because that pride, that bond that we have here in Davie County is original. It's not duplicated anywhere else. And this package now that we have, that the architects came with, that the teachers ourselves got to put some input into, it solves the problem. And I'm definitely in favor of this, because it is one high school for all. It keeps what we have in Davie County special and unique. And as a teacher, as a coach, as a father, as a husband, and as many other roles that I have, I urge you, please, please, give the voters a chance to vote on this as soon as possible, that we can act on this and move forward and bring this issue to a close. And move on as a county and heal and grow and continue to do great things in this county. Thank you.
Derek Harp.
I'm Derek Harp. I was raised in Farmington Community. I now live on the Baltimore Road in Advance. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I come to you to ask you to consider a bond vote in November for the plan that the Davie County School Board has put forward. For one high school and a repurposing plan for the existing high school at the existing site for the betterment of all students in Davie County. This would be the first opportunity, I understand, in November for you to get this underway and allow it to stand on its own merits. I'm a husband, father, small business owner, and lifetime resident of Davie County. I married my high school sweetheart, Pam Potts Harp. My family has a history of supporting Davie County. The Harps, the Seeks, the Collets, and the Hutchins have a long bloodline in this county. My grandfather, the late Burton Seeks, served in the late 1950s on the Davie County Consolidated High School Committee. As stated earlier, I can't imagine saying we're going to close four community high schools for one. But he was a visionary with others in this county to consolidate the one high school. My father, the late Joe Carhart, served on the site selection committee for the junior highs in the late 1970s. I recall memories of my dad and others talking about the need to buy enough land at that time to build another high school at the North Davie Site for the future of Davie County. My grandfather and dad were both involved in many activities in the community. I personally have been involved in meeting the needs of numerous community activities, church, boy scouts, volunteer fire department, David Little League, leadership Davie County PTO, and school activity. With a bond vote for one high school and a repurposing plan at the existing site, recreational needs could be met for the children of Davie County. I challenge you to put this up for a vote in November and take the right steps for all the children in Davie County. Please allow this vote to pass or fail on its own merits. Your role as county commissioners is to come up with a financial plan for the funding options before interest rates start to climb. I have seen this county change and move forward through visionaries like my grandfather, my parents, and other pioneers in education within this county. The school board's plan will solve a lot of the current problems of today and for the future. Let us put this ballot up in November for one high school for all and repurposing plan for all the children in Davie County. Your opportunity to vote on the plan will come the same day mine does. Let's be visionaries for the future of Davie County. Thank you very much.
Ken White.
Good evening. Ken White, live in Advance. I've never done it from this side of the board. Y'all bear with me, guys. I haven't been this hot since we was at Paris Island in the drill stuff. He shut the windows and closed the radiators up and had his exercises. But I see a lot of fans going. I want to come before you tonight and do what Scripture talks about. That's encouraging, gentlemen. I want to encourage you. I know how hard your job is. It doesn't come with a book of instructions, and neither does the school board. But I do believe that together, you can solve any problem. I seen Ms. Marlene Shimmel out in the hall. And in 2001, we co-chaired the Facilities Task Force. And I got to thinking that those kids that were in first grade in 2001 are now seniors, and they're still in trailers. And that's an embarrassment to me. And what I am so proud of is the leadership of Dr. Hartness and this school board. Seeing a solution. And it is a good solution, because we've tried other things that the people didn't like. We tried another school bond. We tried realignment of the grades. We talked about a ninth grade academy. We finally got something here, guys, that would make a lot of sense. Now, I want to spring you back to the 50s a little bit, like Dr. Hartness did a while ago. Those were pretty tough times when they were planning that school. We had just come out of a very, very costly war. There were almost as many casualties in three years in Korea as 10 years in Vietnam, when I said it. Almost 50,000 casualties. We had a president named Eisenhower that had gotten so impressed at how fast the Germans could move troops through something called the Autobahn, he's trying to get this interstate bill passed. He had no idea how that would impact our life. I bet if I asked for a show of hands, everybody in this room's been on an interstate the last week. And education is the same way. It impacts your life. It takes you to new destinations. I'm in a business that I get to go into, a lot of businesses. You guys know what I do for a living. And I'm telling you, lumber's up, steel's up, housing starts are up. There's going to be an opportunity here for us to build, and an opportunity for us to borrow money, that I think is going to be a small window. And I encourage you, if there's a chance for this school to get built, and I think there's a lot of energy in this room, and I think there's a lot of energy in our community, and I want to encourage you, thank you, to give consideration to putting this whole bond. You talked about the Constitution earlier, Mr. Chairman. I agree with you. And part of that Constitution is due process. And what that due process allows us to do is to vote on things. And I would like to see this vote happen as quickly as possible. I think this county will respond positively to one school. I think it'll be an overwhelming response to one school.
Thank you, Mr. Harp.
Okay. I'd like to raise the question. A man of good courage.
Claude Scott.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Chair, members of the board. It's a privilege to stand before you. I'm a lifelong citizen of Davie County. I attended Davie County School. Graduated from Davie County Training School. Not involved with any prison, I tell you. Davie County Training School. A year after the current high school was built. I served on the Board of Education. I served on the Board, the Stut Long Range Planning Board. I served on the Board for studying the redistricting. And I've served on several boards in the county. And I spent over 30 years in the military. Mr. Chair, you seem to have a soft spot for members of the military. Maybe I'll get one of those Davie County buttons when I give you a short bio of my military service. I also served 27 years with corporate America. I worked with regulatory agencies, North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, Florida, the District of Columbia, Maryland, and many other states. And I know what it is to be confronted with issues such as we are confronted with here tonight. I see a good plan. I see a lot of input, a lot of hard work that's gone into this plan. Everything from architects to engineers to various environmental people. There's a lot of work that's gone into this, fellas, ladies and gentlemen. I too support this plan. I see a very well-thought-out plan. And I just encourage you to take us to the next level as fast as you can take us. If we could put this on a referendum next week, I would encourage you to do just that.
Amen.
I admire the work that's before the school board. And I thank you for your work as commissioners, your stewards of the county of Davie. I sincerely thank you for your efforts. And I trust that you will put your best foot forward and take us to the next level with this current issue that's before you tonight.
Marlene Shimmel.
Good evening. I'm Marlene Shimmel, and I'm here tonight to simply state that all Davie County children deserve excellent school facilities with strong leadership from its school superintendent and superb teachers and teacher assistants who do as much towards building up our county as anything else. Having served on the Board of Education for 12 years and having a genuine passion for public education, I support the current Board of Education's vision to strengthen the educational possibilities for our high school students by building one new high school. A legacy that current residents of Davie County could leave for future generations. I sincerely hope that you will allow the voters of Davie County to have the opportunity to voice their opinion on the November ballot concerning this most important element in the education of Davie County's children, the building of one new high school. Thank you.
Sarah Wood. Sarah Wood.
My name is Sarah Wood. I'm here this evening to speak to you in regards to the needs for this one new high school. We know, all of us know, how old the other school is. It's on its way out. The students that are there and that are to enter high school need the very best in education that we can provide for them. I encourage you to take the lead in this matter and to get this bond election underway. Get the referendum on in November so that we can provide this new facility that can add so much to the lives of our students and to all the potential growth in Davie County. Interest rates are as low now as they have been. Building construction is also as low as it will be. Now is the time. Let's all move forward together with your leadership. Thank you.
Marcia Dove.
Good evening. I'm Marcia Dove, Advance, North Carolina. And I think I'm the first person here to speak who is not a Davie County resident. My family's not from Davie County. But I brought my children here as babies, and Davie's their home. And I am embarrassed by Davie High School. I speak to the fact that everybody's talking about the referendum. And I'm ashamed that we have to do it. And I think you should be ashamed that you're allowing us to get to this place. You're elected to lead. And leaders often make decisions that aren't popular. I know that in the past, we've been here eight to 10 years, and this issue has come up. But if you've been to the high school and you've seen it, what I say to you is, if you can afford to live better, if you could afford to provide better, which among you would not provide better for your own children, for your own grandchildren? And yet, you think it's okay for our kids to be here every day? It's time. And so if a referendum is what must happen, if you fail to lead and make this decision without it, fine. But allow us to vote in November. Allow us to vote what's best for our children if you will not. Thank you.
Next is either Alicia or Alice.
Alice.
Alice, okay.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for this opportunity. And what I'm going to say, I reckon that it's going to be very dunded. I'm here as a proponent of putting a school bond referendum on the November ballot. Some say now is not the time, and yet the longer we wait, the more construction costs rise. Some say people can't afford higher taxes, and yet many of our lower-income families with children in the school system won't be affected because they pay rent. And we should consider their interests, too. A person on a fixed income like me at least has an income, and I know at the beginning of each year what it's going to be. This means, as I do my budget, I can put my priority on something that will be here after I'm gone. Just as others made a sacrifice for my generation, I'm willing to make one for those coming after me. I don't think that we should continue to put new wine into an old high school. I don't think that we should continue to put new wine into an old high school wine skin. We like, we take pride in the new industries and what attracted them to Davie County, yet newcomers can do the research and study and can study how at Davie High they excel in academics, in athletics, and in extracurricular activities, and they can still be turned off when they see the facilities. I hope you'll see fit to allow another vote on the issue. We now have a momentum and a united effort of young parents who want one new high school and who are evidently willing to give up something for what it's going to cost. I take the attitude, it would be shortsighted not to want the best for the future workers who will be paying into the social security funds that I collect each month. And I say that quite lightheartedly, but on a more serious note, I'd like to say that I follow Rick Warren or either Matt McCarroll's words, that it's not about us. Either way, I'd like a chance to vote my conscience on November, in November, since I don't want to be among the goats on Reckoning Day. Then, ask about my omissions. I know it's not about me, it's about our young people.
Julia Suter.
I did not know I was going to follow Alice Bruch. She said the very things I wanted to say and share with you. But let me tell you a couple of things, and one is that how I and we, when I look around this room and I see the enthusiasm, none of these folk with gray hair, but these young people. And when these young people get behind this issue, I think it tells us something, that they are willing to stick their necks out to do some things that we have failed to do in the past. So, thank you, young folk. And then when I see Dr. McCarroll come by and share with us information about our growth and development through the hospital, it tells us something. When I hear the statistical data about how our kids rank in the state in math and reading, it tells us something. I spent thirty-six years in this county and working with Davie County students and four years in another county, so forty years I have been working with children, and I'll tell you what, this is the best place that anyone could ever work in. This is the best place where we have teachers who have done so well in spite of the lack of resources they did not receive. So, at this time, I'm imploring with you, that you, members of this commission, that you reach back and forget about those political footfalls, that you put those things aside, and that there are personal agendas, put those aside, and let's look at why we are here. We are here first tonight to encourage you to do the right thing. And I'm also saying to you that I believe that if we put our best foot forward, then on November, we will have this election. And I think our people are saying that regardless of the taxes, increased taxes we may have to pay, and we don't mind doing it. I've heard folks say already that I'm willing to pay a few extra pennies, and that's okay because our children are worth it. So, thank you so very much. Put it on the referendum, and let's get going. Thank you.
Jim Eaton.
Thank you, Mr. Blubler, Mr. Chairman. Derek Hart reminded me of Mr. Furchess and Mr. Seats and several others in Davie County. Let's don't forget about the Faribees and the Furchesses and some others in that group, the Hunters and many more. I'm Jill Meaton. I'm a farmer from the Cana Community, Clarksville, northern end of the county. My family came here in the seventeen forties, and make no understanding, I have never voted against a school bond, and I'm not going to vote against it. It's going to raise my, we own a few hundred acres of land, and it's going to raise my taxes by a few thousand dollars, but that's okay. I'll skip a couple of meals at Simron's or Staley's or somewhere and pay the additional money that we have to pay. The average, when I was on Board of Educational Review, the average home in Davie County is somewhere a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, let's say a hundred and fifty. If the tax rate goes up ten cent for the school and another penny or two to renovate the existing facilities, we're talking, let's say, the county can find a little bit of money, the school board has already found something, we're talking ten cent. Ten cent times a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty dollars a year. If you live in a fifty thousand dollar home, it's going to cost you fifty. That's two trips to Burger King. We can do better than what we have. I entered Davie County High School in nineteen fifty-nine, married a girl from Coolme, we were blessed with two daughters. One is now the principal at North Davie. We have been extremely fortunate. I remember when there was grading for the football field, and I remember getting hot dogs, hot dogs or cheeseburger, whichever one you wanted, or a plain burger from Larnes as you stop in Grill in Coolme because we didn't have a cafeteria. So, I've been there and done that. My family's been here since seventeen forties, like I said. We need to do this. We can do this as a Davie County. We need to quit being divided, quit arguing, quit bickering, quit talking about each other. I wouldn't talk to the cows that I've had all my life the way that some of the people in Davie County talk to the girls last year. Two more things. Number one, thank you Bath Dirks and On the Horse Is, right there. A true blessing to Davie County. Thank you for our work. We have a wonderful school board and the leadership of Dr. Hart. We have a wonderful Board of Commissioners. Thank you for serving in this capacity. I want to especially thank Mark Jones. We wouldn't have had a school budget passed this year if it hadn't have been for Mark. One tenth of a percentage point on this interest rate of fifty, fifty-five million is fifty thousand dollars a year. The sooner we get it done, the better off we'll be. Let's get a new high school.
Chad Blackwelder.
My name's Chad Blackwelder, born and raised here in Davie County. It's too hot for me to repeat everything everybody said because I totally agree with them. I can tell you this, up to a few years ago, to me, we were just band-aiding the problem by having two high schools totally against me. Dr. Hart and his team have gave us a solution. I don't see how we, it's inevitable, we've got to have a new high school. We can't keep band-aiding this high school. I took my daughter down there a few weeks ago because she is an upcoming freshman, and I was appalled at the situation and the atmosphere and the surroundings that she's going to be faced with for the next four years. And I think we owe it to our students, we owe it to our teachers, to let's get this on the boat, let the citizens decide, good or bad, let them decide, and let's move forward. As everybody else has said, it's one of the stepping stones that Davie County has got to get to, to make progress, grow. Thank you.
Doug Illiam.
Hi, my name's Doug Illing, teacher, football coach, for fifteen years at high school. Mr. Chairman and fellow boards, I thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I want to echo everything everybody's been saying as well. I think this county is very proud, the education that we've had and the job that everybody's done. You guys have done a great job in creating a community that is a great place to raise your children, and I want to thank you for that. Dr. Hart and his administration have done a great job of presenting this new school to our community. He's gotten students involved, he's gotten fellow teachers involved, he's gotten our community members involved in things that we need that's going to make this high school a go. There is a tsunami wave of positive support for this right now, and I encourage you to please put this in the November ballot. Don't delay this to the next year and let this wave fizzle out. I think there's a positive support for it. We've got your back, and we'll make this happen. So, thank you again for what you do and look forward to working in this new high school. Thank you.
Bill Junker.
Hello, I'm Bill Junker. I, Mr. Chairman, appreciate the opportunity of being here tonight, and I want to thank all you commissioners for your time and service that you do here. I hated that Dr. McConnell had to leave. I just, it is just so overwhelming what Wade Forrest and his group have done for our community here, bringing this hospital to us. It's just absolutely huge, a hundred million dollar investment here, and doesn't cost the taxpayers a dime, and we're just so appreciative of what they've done here, and not only the economics that it brings with it. But, you know, I'm a businessman, I understand business, and I understand, just like what the Baptist Hospital is doing, you know? They could have chose to fix the old hospital, to call it a hospital and so forth, but you have to understand that you have to reinvest and to survive in today's market. And it, you know, I can relate personally to it. My dad moved here when I was a couple of weeks old in nineteen forty-five, and we've been in the retail business here, and we're still here, and very proud of the fact that we're still here. But we're still here because we change with times. You have to realize the fact, and nobody is any more conservative than I am, but you have to invest in the future, and our future is the next generation of our children. And to me, it just, it's the first time I've ever been here, but I have a passion for this. I love this county. It's been good to me and my family, and I'm asking you tonight, if you don't allow the citizens of the county to vote on this this November, it's wrong. And I expect every one of you to consider this and to do this because it's the right thing to do. And, you know, we just need to move forward. Our county, it's embarrassing what Terry Brawley's doing, and all these people are looking over our shoulders and looking at this county and the negative thing of the arguing and so forth. We have got so much going for our county, and if we just put our thoughts and team together, it is just unreal what this county can do. And so, please, let's have a vote in November, and thank you again for your service.
Reverend James Plymouth.
Good evening, everybody. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is James Plymouth, pastor for Baptist Church in Mocksville, also the president of Davie County N W A C P, also the supervisor and facility manager of one of the local businesses around here. I've lived in Davie County all my life, and I graduated from Davie County High School a long time ago. And I'm concerned, citizens and outside persons are excited about the new high school, and I'm highly in favor of building a new high school in Davie County. Number one, the quality of education will always have an impact on business and industry and economic growth, no matter what county it is. With the new high school and the new technology and the new equipment, it can equip our students to be better prepared for the demands of the new job market, and I'm excited about that. I've learned that whenever new businesses are looking for to relocate, the education system plays a big, major role in their relocating to a different place. This would be good for Davie County High School to invest in our students and their future. We have seen the plans, we've seen the designs. Let's not wait any longer. Let's get it done. The longer we wait, the more it will cost us in the future. Things are not getting any cheaper. Let us, let the people decide. Let us do it this year, not next year. Thank you.
Brad Childress.
Thank you, county commissioners, for giving us all this opportunity to speak. And Mark, thank you for, when we send you emails, you're replying and listening to our opinions, I really appreciate that. And in your email, you had two main valid concerns. Now, one concern was the cost of a special election, and I think that has been more than adequately addressed tonight, and I hope everyone feels the same. And the second was the voter suppression associated with a special election. And with that, again, a valid concern compared to a primary. So, we dug a little deeper. If you don't know these numbers, I think you'll find these pretty alarming when it comes to a special election compared to the numbers with a primary election. The last bond referendum, two thousand and seven special election, twelve thousand eight hundred and seventy-two voters showed up from Davie County, twelve thousand eight hundred seventy-two. Two thousand and twelve primary election, twelve thousand three hundred and thirteen, five hundred more voters in the special election. So, hopefully, that addresses that concern. Let's get these people in Davie County to the polls in November. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, next I have is Hunter Thurlow and Gray Thurlow.
Hello, I'm Hunter Thurlow, an eighth grader at North Davie Middle School, and this is Gray Thurlow, my brother, fourth grader at Pine Brook Elementary. You're looking at your future of Davie County. You know, when I sit down in my classes, people do better in a nicer classroom, a newer classroom, not an old classroom. So, let's have a new high school so the future of Davie County can learn better because teachers probably will teach better. In a better learning experience in a new high school. Thank you.
Chairman, Chad Thurlow.
Well, if y'all didn't notice, that was my kid's son. I'm a Davie County resident, all but probably two years of my entire life where I moved out of the county for a couple of years for a job. I grew up in Davie County, up in the Farmington District. I went to Davie High, graduated in nineteen ninety. I was there when they started putting air conditions in a lot of the buildings there. Then, we were three classrooms, I mean, three classes at the high school. We didn't have as many trailers. It wasn't the trailer park that it is today. My oldest is going there next year. You know, it's, it is an embarrassment. I travel for work all the way from Boone to Burlington to Charlotte. I'm self-employed. You know, I tell people that I live in Davie County, nine times out of ten, their first response is, oh, you're from that county that can't get a new high school. You know, most of y'all on this board know me, and I've had deep conversations with a lot of you. You know, years ago, y'all could have just done this, and they didn't have to go through all this. But I've told past county commissioners that... But I've told past county Commissioners that you need to make a decision. We elect y'all to make decisions for this county, and y'all need to make the decisions that are what the county needs based on what you're hearing, and based on the physical needs of this county, and be able to walk out of that door or that door with your head held, with your head held high, and not try to scoot out a back door and jump in your car and take off, because you're afraid of what somebody might say to you. You know, this bond, I agree with, uh, the other lady, let's put it in next week, let's do it in May, why wait till November? Let's get this ball rolling for the future of our kids and the future of our company. We wanna brag about all the co, companies that are moving into this county. Yes, it's Great Ashleys moving in, it's Great Baptist is moving in. But the funny thing is, is how many of the people that show these people the communities really take them in David High and walk them through David High? Would those companies be here if they really saw what David High was, where they're asking their people to move to? That's what you've gotta think about. We need to, we need to put a structure up. Everything from middle school down is in great shape. Our high school, sorry for the, the word, but it sucks. I walked through with my son the other day, the lockers are tied shut because there's no room in the hallways for the kids to use their lockers. I mean, come on, y'all, let's step up to the plate and hit a home run for our kids.
Dwight Goodman or Goodman?
A lot of you people might know me, I ran for the school board last year. Uh, my name is Dwight Goodman. I am a resident here of David County. I like David County, it's quiet, it's peaceful. I don't like to see it like, never have. I like to have a new high school too, but I do not want property taxes to pay for it. I have a better idea, increase the sales tax for everybody. That way, everybody pays for it, not just the children's fees. Because I own a home here in David County, some people do. My taxes are not gonna go up. I got a Jeep, I pay ten dollars and forty-eight cents for it every year. If a property tax goes up, I might pay twelve bucks, but if you increase the sales tax, I'll pay an extra three hundred and twenty to four hundred dollars or more for what I do here in David County. If you do that, you're gonna bring in probably another four or five million dollars per year in sales tax to pay for this new school. It won't come out of anybody's pocket, cause everybody has to pay for it. I'm a graduate of Reynolds High School in nineteen seventy-five over in the South County. This year, that school is ninety years old. The original building is still standing. They've done some renovations, and it costs some money, but the building is still there, new floors, new windows, doors, whatever. I'm proud of that school. I'm proud of the fact that David County has good academics and good sports. We need to do this the right way. Don't make the few pay for the many. That's all I have to say. Oh, one more thing, these businesses, they're coming in to David County. If they wanna bring their kids to the school system, then let them pay for it too. Ask them to chip in a half a million dollars or a million dollars to pay for this new high school. I get a little nervous sometimes when I'm talking anyway, but I don't think the older generation, all of them, are gonna agree that they should pay for it, because some people are on a fixed income. That extra six or seven hundred dollars may be what they used to buy their medicine with. As I said, I'm not a homeowner, I'm a renter. The way you're gonna get more money out of me is raise, uh, raise the sales tax instead of the property tax. The idea where the school's gonna be is a good idea, but I, I think we have to have some extra provisions in that new high school area, so it doesn't affect the middle school, and if you see the papers from time to time, the Commissioners know what I'm talking about as far as shootings, drug activity, things of that nature, so, uh, think about it.
Chairman, Court Check?
Hello, I'm just here, I wanna give you an analogy and ask you a couple of questions. Back when I was in high school, I was talked to about, from one of my social studies teacher, about Chinese, especially the women, how they love the beauty of small, how the Chinese women hundreds of years ago loved the beauty of small feet, so they would wear small shoes, or they would have their feet wrapped to keep them small. What this ended up doing was crippling them, literally crippling them. By having a high school that is too small, are we not crippling our children's education and even their future? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Randy Daniel Senior?
Good evening, Commissioners, good evening everyone, a great big turnout tonight for a county commissioner meeting. But I come to you tonight, uh, my name is Randy McDaniel Senior, I'm from Moxville, been here almost fifty-eight years. Robin, don't laugh, you're older than me. But, uh, I came tonight not to talk about the high school, but this upcoming budget. Thirteen and fourteen budget, you guys have got your hands full, and you need to give your undivided attention to that. There, there's nothing else that you need to be spending your county, uh, involved efforts on, because we've got serious, uh, revenue problems, we've lost money in revow. David County's not immune. Other counties, if you read the paper, they've had budget meetings, David County has not yet. Don't know when they're going to, we've gotta get a budget sometime. The schools haven't, but other county schools have. There was a local article today in the Stateful Paper, uh, Ireland County Commissioner, yes sir, Miss Book, uh, you know, uh, sent in a guest viewpoint, like a letter to the editor of paper, and they are even seeing a two percent decrease in sales tax in Ireland County. So we're gonna, uh, encounter the same things. We've lost a lot in revow, uh, and the discretionary fund, uh, funds, I doubt you've gotten any. You're gonna have to find some, or you're gonna have to increase some, is the taxes in this county. The, the public is not having a lot of extra discretionary funding, when the American Restaurant Association just revealed that the last three months, the first time in years, in years, that there's been a decline in customer participation in the United States. That's discretionary funding. And we're blessed with a lot of good people in this county that are old, they're living on a less, uh, of, uh, you know, retired fixed income. And, uh, we, uh, we just hope and pray for this board to do everything you can with whatever you can do and what your, the cards you're dealt, to give us a, a good, respectful, and, and positive budget, you know, for this year, and dedicate your efforts to that. Thank you all for this turnout tonight. Thank you.